This meeting is of the Gettysburg Board of School Directors on this Monday, August 6th, 2018. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the Gettysburg area school district. Public comment is welcome and issues will be referred to the appropriate board committee or administrator. Please know that issues will not be debated in this public meeting. Comments will be summarized in the official board minutes will be available by contacting the business office. Please take a moment to silence your cell phones and other electronic devices. There will be an administrative conference following the regular board meeting to discuss board development. Jane, would you take notice or record that all board members are present except Kathleen Pratt, who's excused tonight? Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unrivaled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ann or Kane, a motion at this time to accept the minutes from the July 16th, 2018 meeting.
Come on.
Is there any corrections, additions, or lesions that need to be made? All right, Eric and Mike, if all of us in favor of accepting the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, any extensions. All right. Do any board members have any notices or communications to share tonight? Okay. We are now at citizens' participation. We have several people that want to speak to us tonight. We welcome you. Thank you for coming out. And Marty, I know you're on our schedule, so you can go first.
My apologies, I'm about to do the equivalent of eating and running on you guys, but we have our County Commissioners Association Summer Conference here in Gettysburg. So I've been in and out all day, but I wanted to make sure to have a couple comments for you for today, since you had a big decision ahead of you regarding the Gettysburg Station project and the LERTA abatement schedule. And what I would like to suggest, and again, I have not had a chance to talk to my peers about this, but I would like to suggest that you table the decision you were going to make tonight about the LERTA, so that we could schedule a joint board meeting, a workshop, a public workshop for all three entities, the borough, Gettysburg, the school district, and the county to meet, so that we can all sit down together with our staff and have a informed discussion. I'd say one-on-one, but it's more like seven-on-seven and three, just so that we can, without the filter of, you know, staff, and no offense to staff, or solicitor, but it's much easier if we're all together at once, or with the paper interpreting what we've said, or phone calls, or text messages, or emails, but just all of us together at one time saying, here are the pros and cons of the different schedules, and see if we can come to a consensus at a public meeting. And I think that after the amount of time we've spent on this, we owe it to each other, and we owe it to the public, to have a good, informed discussion. And I don't think a few more weeks is going to change the outcome in the long term, but I think it'll do a lot for us to all have our concerns hurt from one another. So, again, I apologize that I have to run, but it could not be avoided today.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty. Enjoy your evening.
Well, County Commissioners Association dinners aren't as exciting as you think.
Okay. Next is Chris Berger.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a public school teacher, so I'm very aware of the financial challenges that school districts have. I'm also a citizen of the borough and a member of Gettysburg Borough Council. And also, that is a very important thing that we have that site developed. So I'm not coming at this as an adversarial relationship between the borough and the school district. I'd like to echo what Marty said, and I think if we are going to find compromise, we should come together, as they did with the LERTA, with the Gettysburg Hotel. So if we could have more opportunity to discuss face-to-face with all the entities involved, I think we would be able to compromise and come up with something that we could all live with. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we have Mark Berg.
Thank you. I just want to point out, first of all, that I was the president of the Board of the Interfaith Housing Alliance in Frederick, Maryland. And we met with the representatives of Adams County National Bank seven or eight years ago, and offered to make proposals to develop that property, and were set away. So we had tried, there have been efforts made in the past, and we didn't ask for any tax breaks. A developer of residential housing knows that schools are important to attract buyers. The current taxpayers should not be asked to subsidize the marketing efforts of the developer by providing the good schools that they use at our expense. At that expense, maybe now, and for 10 years in the future, at a time when the school district, as well as other school districts, will be struggling to cope with perhaps cuts in federal aid. So instead of giving away future revenues through tax breaks, the school district, the borough, and the county should attract development by investing in public goods, starting with education, that may get Gettysburg, the Gettysburg area, an attractive place to live and work. In particular, future residents who value education understand the need to help fund their schools. Reducing tax revenues and tax breaks is a cross-purposes to that. And what will we get for our money? The real costs of such a deal are rarely discussed. There's just an assumption that the developer pays, pays for itself. Most developers don't receive or ask for subsidies from state or local governments, and those that do should be required to report and explain how the tax breaks they're expecting to receive lead to increased tax revenue as a result of their development. So in general, my feeling is that private developers, making private profits, should deal with their own funds and not be asking, especially a school district, to help subsidize them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. And next, we have Susan Nagle.
Thank you, I'm Susan Nagle. I am president of Gettysburg Borough Council, and I am here to also comment on your proposal for the LERTA. First of all, I want to thank the school board for sharing your proposal with our council. We did discuss that at a workshop meeting in July, and there was a lot about your proposal that we liked, and we will certainly consider incorporating some of those changes into our ordinance to enact this. Our problem is with your Schedule B when it comes to the abatement schedules. And Schedule B calls for 100% non-residential. And the vision of the council, and this goes back many years, probably to at least 2007, so it's four councils that have worked with this proposal, is that that area that we're targeting would be mixed-use. It would be a combination of residential, commercial, and business uses. That's very important to the borough. We don't have that many opportunities in the borough to have residential development or any development. This particular site is on a main thoroughfare between Carlyle and Stratton Street. It's a block from our downtown, so it's very important to us. And that has always been what we wanted for our downtown, to make it more vital. We also know that there is a demand in the borough for housing for young professionals, for retired people who want to move back into the community. We know the hospital is always looking for space for medical personnel that they bring in, so residential is key to that. So we need that kind of mix. We also want the best tax benefit we could get. Nobody, including the school district, is getting any taxes off that space right now. So it's important to us that we maximize whatever happens in there. So we want it to meet those needs, if it can provide higher-paying jobs, if it can provide us with more property tax revenue, and provide us with even more earned income tax revenue, that would be ideal. We have spent 10, almost 12 years trying to develop that property, and so it just wasn't happening. So the site has some challenges, and that's why we have proposed and created this LERTA zoning district for that purpose, to attract a developer to come in. The dangers of having strictly non-residential could be many. We certainly can't predict what will happen there over a long term, but the idea of having only non-residential uses there is not at all what our vision has been. And what we fear is that a developer will come in, we have a minimum height of 24 feet, two stories, slap up some two-story buildings and make them all commercial, it'll compete with our downtown, it could result in vacant storefronts that would reduce the vitality of the town. And we really need residents who can go to the shops, go to the restaurants, and provide, you know, some amount of income to our businesses downtown. So it's really a combination that's important to us. We never know what a developer will propose for that. We are very hopeful that they will respond to this LERTA and that we'll get something there that will help us all. My request to you tonight is that you table this motion for now. The borough would like to work with the school district in order to come up with some other options that are workable for both of us. And until such time as we do that, that can happen, we would like to see this tabled. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Wesley? Wesley Heiser?
Good evening. I'm also here this evening, a member of the Borough Council, to encourage the board of directors to table the tax exemption resolution they have on their agenda this evening. I believe there's still some additional common ground that can be covered between the county, the school district, and the borough. The LERTA mechanism was selected and pursued by the borough because the site that we're dealing with has had proposals over the years, and all of them generally involve some sort of public funding influx or tax abatement maneuver. LERTA was selected because it allows the various entities to adopt resolutions or ordinances that meet their needs relating to the revenues and expenditures, while also working in concert. So I would look forward to the opportunity to discuss the matter further with the board of directors, a joint meeting perhaps, so that we can meet a resolution that can fulfill your needs, but also work in concert with the desires of the borough, the county, and the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Wesley. All right, next, we have Rebecca John.
Good evening. Well, I come this evening as the director of the Gettysburg Area Education Foundation. And the foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization governed by the board of directors, and we are a strategic partner of the Gettysburg area school district. And I wanted just to come to present to the board what the foundation has been doing. I have had the pleasure of serving as the director for not quite two years, and had an opportunity a little bit over a year ago, just to report and provide you with an update of what the foundation has been doing. And I wanted to take the opportunity to do that again this evening. As I said, I haven't been with the foundation quite two years, and I joined, it was really to reinvigorate the foundation. Our non-for-profit charter has been in existence since 2006, but really had been relatively dormant for almost the past 10 years. So just a few updates, a few things I'll share with you, is that since my time on the board, we have grown from eight to 14 board members. We have participated with the Adams County Community Foundation Giving Spree, raising almost $4,600, or a little bit over $4,600. And then from 2016 to 2015, the amount that we raised at that event doubled. Through the Robert C. Hoffman Charitable Endowment Trust, we have received $10,000 in grants. We have awarded three mini-grants last year for $750, and will continue to do mini-grants, again, this year to the teachers in the district. It is through an application process. I'm excited to say the most recent grant that the foundation received was specifically to fund strategic planning for the foundation, so that we can map out a strategy for how we can best serve and meet the needs of the students of the district. A couple exciting fundraisers that the foundation has embarked on. We have had our very first, really, it was called the Living Arts Auction, if you were able to join us for that event. And what was so great about this is we did it in conjunction with Gettysburg High School, or really, the Gettysburg School District Art Department, as well as the Adams County Tech Prep Program. Those students provided all of prepared and presented all of the food, as well as served it Butler-style, which helped to satisfy part of their curriculum requirement. And at that event, we were able, through items auctioned and sponsorship, we were able to raise $7,000. Another event, or this, we're getting ready to hold our second annual evening at Totem Pole Playhouse, and I would invite you all to attend. If you haven't purchased your tickets, we still have a limited number available, and that is next Wednesday evening, and the show is Mamma Mia. We, as I said, this is our second time doing it. Last year, we had about 40 participants, and this year, we'll have 80. Before our event, we do have a little wine and cheese reception underneath our tent there, and I believe we have just as a great show this year that we had last year, we had the Million Dollar Quartet, which was an amazing performance, and I believe we'll also have a great time this year as well. We partnered with the Gettysburg Athletic Clubs and Athletic, really, Athletics and a couple of the different clubs at the high school, and did a Warrior Fest program in the fall of last year, just to create some school spirit, create some awareness about our foundation. In the fall of last year, we funded $2,000 in scholarships for students enrolled in either the dual enrollment or college and high school program, and we were able to provide funding for nine students for those classes. We also, the biggest program that we've had to date, we just wrapped up in June of this year, or really, in May, and that was a service learning program at the Gettysburg Middle School. GAEF solely funded that program, not only the salary of the coordinator, but also other expenses, which was over $8,000 from our budget. And through that program, students, all eighth-grade students, or a majority of them, participated in community service outside of the school day with multiple community partners in Gettysburg and the surrounding area, and they served over 800 community service hours. So that was pretty exciting. Through some different projects that we've done, we volunteered or actually had help at a booth at Apple Harvest Festival, through Warrior Fest, through our Living Arts Auction, we have partnered or had the opportunity to work alongside of over 20 different students from the district, helping them to volunteer and meet needs for different service organizations they belong to, or National Honor Society. So that's just a little bit of the activity that we have been doing, and I want to thank the board for your support, because without you, there would be no GAEF. And I truly do appreciate the commitment that you have made to the foundation and your support. So that's what I want to share, and we'd love to see you at Mamma Mia. You can still purchase tickets online. Our website is GettysburgWarriorFunds.org, and that'll direct you right to our site. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. And I appreciate, on behalf of the board, the groundskeeper for the whole board, we appreciate all the work that you have put into the foundation as our director.
Thank you.
What was that website again?
It's GettysburgWarriorFunds, the Funs is plural, dot org.
Okay, finally tonight, we have Mike with the Chestnut.
Yes. I'm Mike Chestnut, I live at 264 Wallmore Street, so that's right down there in the historic district, right back up to the elementary school. And I noticed the letter G there, and I'm going to ask you this evening to also adopt the letter T as a mascot, for truth, transparency, and teamwork, especially teamwork. And I'm not feeling the love, okay? On Schoolhouse Alley there, the borough has an ordinance on weeds, which is 12 inches. Approximately two weeks ago, I did a rock-paper-scissors with the neighbor so she could call, because some of your weeds were three feet hot along the guardrail there. That's a problem, but once you were called, there was immediate reaction. I want to, you know, a round of applause for the groundskeepers down there, because all the lawns are kept immaculate. But that hillside is problematic, with fleas, ticks, and a few groundhogs. So whatever you can do in the future years to traverse that or put ivy or something so you don't have the weed problem and everything else. Kids go up and down, there's a lot of walkers going to town, and a lot of people are walking on that alley. And I appreciate what you did down there by Mr. G's when you built the school. I asked if you could widen that alley for safety reasons, that stopped people from cutting across your parking lot, okay? And you put the two posts down there by the wall alley in Stratton Street, so you don't get skateboarders going through into the playground. So you've done a lot of good things for me, and I appreciate that. From my back porch, I can look down here at the parking lot at La Fever. I haven't been smart enough to get a couple of my friends to get down there and do valet parking. There were over 100 cars there Saturday night. Granted, some of that's the borough's fault, because Baltimore Street was full. My concern is the buses that have now decided to get down there, and more importantly, the recreational vehicles. Recreational vehicles have their own septic systems. You've got to be very aware of MS4 issues. If you want to know about MS4, you talk to Susan Nagle, okay? She's very smart on that, goes to conferences, and has talked to the borough officials about this. I'd also like to echo what you heard on feeling the love on teamwork. This LERTA, the ready site, whatever you want to call it, something's got to be done. There's tax dollars to be hacked. Past couple of years, I've had to reach into my fixed-income wallet, and I realize that, you know, what I'm doing is growing tomorrow, today, by educating the students, and I think all in all, you're doing well in competition. But something's got to be done. You heard what Marty said, you heard what Borough Council said, and I think you're shooting behind the ducks, because they've already made their decisions. Best part of my job is I can stand on this side of the dais, you guys are sitting on that side, all in all, you're doing a good job, I'll give you a D+. I'm a hard grade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, next, we have board committee reports. I did place on, at each place on your table, the report from Kathleen, since she could not be here tonight, on the Communications Committee. Quite lengthy, I'm not necessarily going to read it word for word, I think you can read that. But basically, we're revamping the committee, and basically, I think in summary, it's just going to, we're going to work as a sounding board for our communications coordinator, and we'll work closely with Andrew. And we're only going to meet quarterly, or when we need to meet, to discuss anything that has to do with communications. So the next meeting is scheduled for October 24th at 4:00 here at the Administration Building. So that's a free-to-read. Kathy?
Why are you looking at me? I think I got a report.
I don't know.
Mr. President, the Policy Committee met on July 17th. We tackled the long-awaited grouping of transportation policies that were in dire need of update, and we waited quite a long time to get some input from PSBA to assist us with that. I want to publicly thank Bill Bowling for the incredible job that he did, taking our old policies dating from 1990 and 1996, plus the new drafts provided by PSBA, and our transportation contract or agreement with all of our transportation companies, and putting all that together to make sure that it's consistent and there's no conflicts. He put a tremendous amount of work into these updated policies, some of them, you know, so updated, they don't even resemble the old ones, so, I mean, I can't even take you line by line, it's that extensive of updates. And I'll discuss that a little bit more when we get to those agenda items, we have multiple policies on for first read tonight. And in fact, we actually superseded one that you'll see on there for retirement, and I'm thinking that's going to need action rather than information, but we can talk about that when we get there. Next meeting is August 14th.
Jane, that's the report. Bill, anything you report on finance and building grounds?
Yeah, we're still shooting for finance, buildings, and grounds for September.
Okay, September. Building program information, preparing.
Hi, good evening. Athletics is getting ready to start off their fall season, will be starting practices August 13th, it's coming Monday. Today, football heat week kicked off. The reason I'm here is, you have in front of you a flyer for a foundational item that Mr. White just put into place several years ago, and kind of continuing that tradition to have a local, low-cost, and in this case, for Gettysburg Athletes Free Student Leadership Conference, that all mine do 12 graders in the district and surrounding communities are invited to attend. This year, we'll be holding the fourth annual Student Leadership Conference over at HAC on Saturday, August 25th, and you guys are more invited, more than welcome to come and visit, stop in, you can come hear our guest speaker. This year will be Mrs. Kelly Piper. She's a former Division II swimmer and a mental health coach and assistant athletic director at the University of Buffalo, and she's going to be traveling down here. And maybe we'll put a little bit of random spin on it. This year, we're also going to have a former Gettysburg athlete from Penn State, Evan Lewis is coming down to help us out and give a speech and have a module that he'll run. So we're switching a little bit, but kind of sticking to the roots of having a guest speaker and a low cost. It's about a four-hour, five-hour date for student athletes to come and visit. We have about 100 signed up, we're shooting for about 150 when all is said and done between all the districts, when the signups actually come, so hope to see you there, if you want to come stop by. Thank you.
Thanks, I want to thank our athletic director for continuing that program. Last two years, I stopped in and watched for a couple hours. It was a very valuable program, I think, for our students, student athletes. Thank you. Thanks, Bill.
One, in your site, you're making, I think you have a memo regarding Easy For Cure, that's the name of the purchasing card program that we use, and it mentions that we've got $16,600 rebate for our use of that card last year. Just to note that because of the way we use that card throughout the district, we actually received a higher level of rebates than most participants in the program. But it is a program that makes purchasing more efficient throughout the district. The second item on the agenda is a The second item on the agenda is a request to adopt a resolution regarding House Resolution 291. We mentioned that in a previous meeting. We're asking to actually take formal action to state of the board's preference to retain the current collection of earned income packs under Act 32, rather than have the state collect it. As you mentioned in the last meeting, there was a survey, and they had mentioned that they had something like 1,800 responses generally in favor of statewide collection rather than the current process. We've learned a little bit more about that. For employers and for tax preparers and accountants, when they would go onto the state's website to schedule a payment of taxes withheld or some other tax payment, the survey popped up. So, the survey was being pushed to those people who would like to do less work, and the question asked, would you rather have statewide collection? Well, for those people, the answer is sort of like asking citizens of the school district if they'd like to pay less taxes. Well, of course, they would like less work, and that's the answers that you're being given. So, they weren't pushing that survey out to municipalities and school districts who actually receive and rely upon those revenues. So, we're asking for your action. The survey actually closed last week. It wasn't publicly stated that it was going to, but it did. We were told that input received will be closing at the end of August, and that's why we have this on the agenda for this evening. Family questions, I'm glad to try to answer them. We would appreciate your support.
Couple of weeks away from the start of school. They're going to show up. Once August 22 approaches, 20th is the first day for our faculty and staff, the 21st is our district opening, and 22nd, first day with students. I'd like to thank Andrew for filming today. Got to spend some time with some of our rising first graders. They were kindergartners last year, going to be first graders this year, and did some interviews to continue the series that I began last year with interviewing students as they matriculate through the system, and hopefully, X number of years down the road, we'll be able to watch those students answer similar questions across six, seven, eight years to see how those answers change. So, thanks, Andrew, for taking care of that. School's approaching, and we're still hiring. Obviously, the front end of the summer, there's usually a flurry of activity, and then you deal with the domino effect on the back end of the summer. And I'd like to thank Tam and all of our administrators for diligently working, not just to fill positions, because the last thing we want our folks to do is fill positions, but for finding really quality folks to bring onto our team. So, thanks, Tam, and thanks for the administrative group for continuing to do that. So, the next couple of weeks, most of the time spent in preparation for the start of the school year, by most, I mean pretty much all, and we're looking forward to a great start for fall of 18. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Perrin. Okay, on to our business portion of the meeting. We'll start with personnel. Items 9.1, 2, and including item 9.8 and item 9.10. Discussion. Hearing none, take vote. Kathy.
Yes.
Al.
Yes.
Bill. Carrie. Kenny. Jim. I vote yes. Next is curriculum and programs, items 10.1, 2, and including 10.3. These are the student handbooks. Discussion.
Mr. President, I appreciated the reading task. I think I might be the only one that actually reads all of these handbooks. Couple of corrections, I've already sent to Jane, who can send them to whoever is responsible for them. They generally overall look good. Elementary handbook, two things on page 5 in reference to Al Moyer. He should be doctor, not mister. On pages 19 and 20, there's a chart of board policies that clearly are supposed to be links, but those links don't work, so we need to figure that out. Middle school handbook, under educational other planned absences recently in policy, we changed the educational trip number of days in the year from five to 10, so that needs to change both in the middle school handbook and the high school handbook. The athletics handbook, it's mostly names changes from Michael Williams to Casey Thurston. On the coach contract form, I thought it would be good to take Larry Redding off and put Jason Perrin on. And again, the, all the references to district policies that are in that 130-page missive don't work, so it's a matter of figuring out how to get those links reactivated. Athletics comes later, so I just did it all at once. Hold those thoughts for when we get to that.
I was just going to say, I think that's the number of athletics, but that's okay, you covered it all. Any other discussion?
My reading homework, I did it all at once.
Hearing no more discussion. Call vote, Al?
Yes.
Bill? Carrie? Kenny? Kenny? Jim? Kathy? And I vote yes. Brings us to policy, items 12.1, 2, and including 12.4. Discussion.
Let's move them first. Some votes.
I'm sorry, you're right. I have to move them. Now, discussion.
Mr. President, I'm going to suggest that 12.5, which is on here as an information item, also needs to be an actionable item. We're retiring that policy, which I would assume takes fore action, however, the contents of that policy are now included in these other policies. So, it's redundant, which is why we're retiring it. So, I think that needs to be an item, not an information item. I addressed most of these, most of the policy work earlier in my committee report. 12.3, which is policy 810-2, video and audio surveillance on school transportation, that's, the only change on that really is the number to make it consistent with the 810 series of the rest of the transportation policies, which had somehow become 816, somewhere back in history.
Have any of you done?
I'm done.
Okay. Okay, based on...
Somebody tells me I'm not done.
I'm just making sure. If there are no objections from board members, do we make item 12.5 instead of informational? Do we make it the part of the vote, part of the five? Any objections?
No.
To make that, to help handle it that way, that you can just add it to the other ones?
I think it's happened. It's two parties who moved and seconded it, agreed that that's part of the motion.
Okay. That's what we have then. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so, we have items 12, 13, including 12.5. Bill? Carrie? Kenny? Jim? Kathy? Al? I vote yes. Next, athletics, items 13.1, 2, and including 13.3. Discussion.
Mr. President, I already gave you my comments on 13.1. I didn't find any errors in 13.2.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Carrie? Kenny? Jim? Kathy? Al? Bill? I vote yes. Business and finance, item 17.1, adoption of resolution for tax exemption relief.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just being a part of the informal working group, has looked into LRTA for some time now. In our discussion, based upon a letter addressed to you by Borough Council, as well as taking into consideration tonight's request from county commissioners, from several of Borough Council members, we recommend to the board as a whole, table the motion on the abatement schedule to further evaluate the needs of the district and open up a mutual conversation or discussion or workshop, whatever you want to call it, as needed between the three taxing bodies. The informal group, and I believe that there's significant gap issues that can't be resolved in some format as we move forward with additional time to allow all the taxing bodies to discuss the project, and that's to really to ensure that the taxpayer as well as the community as a whole is represented with a fair and respectful manner from all three of the taxing bodies that have an obligation somewhat different, but equally the same when it comes to the taxpayer. We're not diminishing our action or the action, you know, that the informal group that came up with when we suggested the abatement schedule. We're basically asking tonight to table the motion, we would vote to table a motion to allow a better representation in a dialogue from Gettysburg Borough and from the Adams County Commissioners Office.
I would ask a procedural question to the solicitor. Since it has not been moved, does it have to be moved before it's tabled, or can it just be not acted on at all?
Since there was no motion before the meeting, you don't technically need to table it. You can take what's been presented as a motion on its own to, instead of acting on this tonight, rather setting up some type of a mutual meeting with the other taxing bodies.
Then I would further, in accordance with what solicitor has said, it's my understanding or how to represent that we will have some form of informal working group or some sort of discussion with the two other taxing bodies as we move to the future. It would be the informal working group based upon LRTA's suggestion to those other taxing bodies that would occur sooner than later as to move the project and our resolution along back on the agenda item. So, my motion would be specifically then to table this particular action until further notice or recommendation by this informal working group that we're able to present a fair and balanced, comprehensive report back to you.
I'm saying pain.
Well, it's just, we don't want to get hung up necessarily on the technical term table. You're not technically, you don't technically table something that's not yet been placed before the meeting. There is no, there has been no motion yet made to adopt this LRTA resolution, so you don't have to table it. One thing I would suggest is if you are going to meet the request from the other two taxing bodies, that instead of just having a small working group, that you actually have the entire body meet with, their, stick their entire organizations, and you do it in a public meeting.
And I'm not suggesting a non-public meeting. What I'm suggesting is, is that if there is an issue related to the tax abatement schedule, that either the borough or the county would want the school district to take into consideration at some point, that's why I suggested that informal working group still be set the guidelines before, right now, I'm not sure what the discussions would actually be.
And that's for the, and forgive me, that's for the body to discuss. I just was pointing out what I thought I heard them say, but obviously, you heard it too.
And one of the problems right now is, we've worked very hard on this effort, as you all know, and we meticulously constructed what we have put forth. It was a great deal of thought, I thought. We've learned that our perspectives from the other taxing bodies are still considerably different. And I have to tell you that up until about two minutes ago, we have been talking past each other. And if we're going to resolve this, we need to not do that. We can go ahead and table it to try to quickly resolve our differences, but personally, I'm very dubious, because I think, well, I'm very dubious as a possibility.
Well, then I'm somewhat confused. I'm not taping, and then I'm going to request that no action this evening takes place on this item that's listed on our agenda. I mean, it's been a call, it's been called for, and there is somewhat of a confusion. I'm asking, I'm making an informed motion, but we don't take action on this item for the reasons that I articulated.
And it's up to the chair, but if you want to have the body act on that motion, then you can do that.
On a motion to not act?
Right. Right. One way of doing it is just, if no one makes the initial motion to adopt the LRTA, then it would never be placed before the meeting. It's on the agenda, apparently. I don't have the agenda in person. It's on the agenda, but just because it's on the agenda doesn't mean you have to act on it.
Well, I think in all fairness, and to, not only public, to everybody, is to allow us right now to indicate why we're not acting on it, because the agenda item's published, people are very well aware that it's on our agenda tonight, and I don't want to leave it to be circumstanced or someone else's opinion on why this body here didn't take action. I mean, I believe that we're actually stepping back and doing what the right thing is for the community and allowing additional time to, from the other two taxing bodies, so that we can make an informed decision as a body as a whole. So, I think we're doing the right thing.
I think we should get the team together before we approach the rest of the board.
So, let's get back to where we are. Is there a motion?
That's the last motion I heard.
There is a motion.
Or no action?
To take action on the item related to LRTA.
17.1, there's no action on that. Is there a second? Okay. Now, I guess you have a discussion. Sounds like we already had our discussion. Any other?
The only thing I would say, since two of the three members of our subcommittee that met with the group have agreed to or made the motion and seconded it, I would support that.
Okay. Take a vote. Kenny? Excuse me, Kenny? Jim? Kathy? Al? Bill? Carrie? I vote yes. Case of will be no action on that item tonight. Item 17.2, the adoption of the House Resolution Number 291 that Brad talked about. Discussion.
Just a question, that what was attached to the agenda was a generic document, is I'm assuming those blanks are going to get filled in and...
They already are filled in, and one that's available for signature if you so approve, yes.
Every time we send a dollar to Harrisburg, we don't get back a dollar.
And this is asking Harrisburg to collect our dollars?
Yeah.
We talked about this a bit last meeting.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Jim? Kathy? Al? Bill? Carrie? Carrie?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
I vote yes. There are no other items for, I mean, the business items for tonight. Next meeting is August 20th at 7:00 here. Is there anything, any board member needs to bring before we adjourn? The orders? Hearing none. We are adjourned.